Well, I was like, oh, what do I have to do? It's weird, it's maybe it's.
Well, that's kind of hard to determine, they feel it actually goes into a bag. There could be some great discussions.
Hey, Dr. Gray, how are you? I just did it, we're all.
What, what can be done and what?
Well, I didn't look today, but they usually keep water in the refrigerators. Well, the water will rust down to my.
And he brought him the actual. He keeps control of this. He comes here for everything. So, but costume. And they just come up. And the names and the address. Shall, okay, and they shall not be disturbed if the expenses be on the surround.
Get the part where actually what the procedures. Procedure for their filing is dangerous.
Okay, okay. Oh, are you? Shall not, shall not. Okay. Oh, so.
So, things.
Okay. Down to. Okay. Okay. Shall not. We assess against them. Well, that's. This is really over the same. Okay. Is that right? Three? They said wrong with mine.
Can we get one copy of this?
I got one second. Fourth. Devil's.
Come on, I was too.
Thank you.
Now, Gray, how you doing?
Director Molder, he's taking your back. Be, Mr. Tyble.
Be termine.
You're thoughtful, too. My, minimums.
Minimums.
Yeah.
We don't have a map.
Yeah, it would be minimal.
Well, yeah. Cats.
Cats. You have to make sure you're correct.
Yeah. This should be cats. I don't need that. P, 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 E, S, and there's maximum there. Three cats.
No. It could be fresh. And. Oh, thank you. Yeah. I get a friend real fast. Okay, thank you.
Since we're all getting more and more, since we're all getting richer.
All ready in order, all rolled.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Anford?
Present.
Mr. Hoffman?
Present.
Mr. Oakley?
Present.
Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
My gracious heavenly father, once again, we bow down before thee to offer our thanks for thy presence in our lives. Father, we ask that you be with us, guide and direct us, that our thoughts and actions would always be acceptable in your sight and for the good of our community and our citizens. Let your light shine down upon us, father, that we might take up our cross and follow thee, for we ask it in your son's dear name. Amen.
All of you receiving minutes from last month is red corrections or additions, if not, they're standing red. Old business. Under old business, Chuck requested sitting on the ordinance committee, I'd like to make an appointment for that. I'll entertain a motion.
I made a motion for you, Chuck, the ordinance committee.
Okay, second. Larry, Laura Rook.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Anford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman? Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Okay. Any other old business? If not, we'll open the council to the visitors that would like to address the council and come to the podium. Give us your name and the reason you'd like to address, Mr. Elliott.
Name of the board, Elliott. At this meeting, city attorney rep is supposed to bring back an answer to a private individual question, an answer I know for a fact the city attorney has. And so do I. As could anyone else truly interested in finding that answer instead of just creating controversy. I, as a citizen of this state, county, and city, am not going to allow our city attorney to enter this private individual question in his capacity as city attorney at this meeting. Of all people, I would like anybody that has served or serving on the city council would know that our city attorney doing private legal work for a private citizen is a violation of our state constitution. So, if any private citizen wants legal research done, they can hire a lawyer. They can't do it on the city's dime. And if you want to know which article and section this constitution violates, look it up, I did.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address? Yes.
I'm not sure if I'm out of order or not, I'm Neil Darnell with NACAC, and I have a proposal to make, it might be under new business, or should I address it now?
Go right here.
Thank you. As I just stated, my name is Neil Darnell, for those of you that don't know, that don't know me, I'm with the NACAC in Bowling Green, I'm the new Pike County Coordinator. And I have an issue, just a little background first, if I may. We have a program that benefits homeless and those that are imminently homeless, or those on the verge of being homeless. When they're being kicked out of the street, they're no longer welcome to live with their current residents, what have you. We have a program called Housing First that benefits, that we basically, what that does is that they pay their first month's rent along with their deposits and any utility deposits. So, when they, whether it includes electricity, gas, water, what have, what have you. So, when, when, when our emergency program coordinator, Linda Fritz, makes a phone call to Ameren or to Liberty Utilities in Bowling Green, what have you, and says, we want, we want to make a pledge to get this deposit, to get, to get this turned on for the, for the consumer, then that is accepted, and they go and turn it on, the checks, checks are cut on Friday every week. Which brings me to, to the current situation here at Louisiana Water Department. When we have a person come in on Monday to the Louisiana Water Department and apply for water, they go, the, the water department turns in a request to NACAC for the assistance, or for, for the, what the, what the bill's going to be. We then have to wait until Fridays to send a check to the water department. That consumer has to wait at least five days, if not seven to eight, in order to get water turned on in their apartment. What I'm requesting to the city council is that when we call to make a pledge to the water department, that is accepted, and the person can then move in and receive water.
Actually, we refer, normally refer that to the water committee. I'll let you speak on that behalf, Mr. Elliott. If I understood you, Neil, all you want to do is, you want us to take your word, but we can.
In layman's terms, I'd like a pledge to be accepted as cash.
We, we. Okay, on, Rose, the chairperson of the water department, Bob Dennis is the city administrator, and he needs to make a comment also.
In speaking with the office manager prior to your arrival, Nate, Neil, we had an abundance of similar problems where, for whatever reason, the people were there for a short time, they didn't meet your requirements or didn't meet other requirements, but they, they were there, and water was used, and we never got paid for it.
That's not what you said, though.
This is before Neil's.
Right, right.
But what you're saying is, you've not made the pledge, so you're going to pay the bill.
That's, that's, yeah, right.
And then, if that's the case.
But what you were saying is that in the past, where all of a sudden, the.
We got burned, we got burned on some bills.
Was that a few months down the road, or was that a few days, or was that, what timeframe are we looking at?
Yeah, it usually was like between a day and, or days in a week, where their paperwork didn't get completed through NACAC or one way or another.
Right.
And yet, we turned on the water, but it, we never got paid.
Okay, let's put it this way, when we make a pledge, we keep it, and so, I mean.
That's all I ask.
Right, so when Linda Fritz calls and says, we pledge this much money, it's going to be pledged, it's going to be.
I mean, I am more than willing
Yes.
to give you the opportunity
Okay.
to rectify the situation.
Right.
And if you can do that, so be it.
And the only pledges will be coming from Linda or myself, the two. You have a question?
Okay, these, this is already set up, when you call and ask to request the water to be turned on, these people have already been.
They've already applied, and I guess they've been approved, and we're pretty much at the final stage, we'll make the pledge, and that's pretty much the final. Make the pledge, we assume that they're going to move into the department.
Yeah, I, I would have no problem with the sentence set off.
First, I don't. I try. Why don't you, the minister, allow them to do this?
I think we can do it administratively.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, do you have a question?
Oh, my God.
You have to come up to the podium, say your name.
You got somebody before you yet.
Okay.
Okay. I have been requested by a group of residents of Ward Three to make this pledge or this comment to you. I attempted to do it at the last meeting, but was asked not to, so I'd like to read it to you at this point. I've been requested by a group of third ward citizens to bring to full council a motion to reinstate our elected representative, Mrs. Morris, to her rightful seat on the city council. The Missouri Attorney General's office has determined that that session is, in question, was not legal. Thus, those citizens making this request feel that the impeachment charges brought against Mrs. Morris are no longer valid, and she should sit as our representative. Those requesting her reinstatement also recommend that her legal fees be paid by the city, being that it was the council who brought the impeachment charges against Mrs. Morris. Okay.
Mr. Elliott?
Now? Well, I could do it now, or?
Now would be.
Okay. This is the proposed response to the Attorney General's office that I've written. I intend to send this out unless the council or the administration wants this to be revised or changed in some way. To Ms. Patricia Churchill, Office of the Attorney General. Dear Ms. Churchill, thank you for your letter of January 18, 2013. As I indicated in my telephone message, I first learned of your letter because it was evidently provided to news stations, but your actual letter, letter sent via post was addressed to zip code 63353, whereas my address is in zip code.
whereas my address is in zip code 63401. I wanted to see the actual letter before making a response and I request that you update your records with my correct coastal zip code. I appreciate the many good points you raised in your letter and I assure you that the city will take advantage of the opportunity to attend further sunshine law training. My understanding is that the seminar will be offered in Hamilton, Missouri on February 14th. Let me first respond to, quote, "other matters you raised." Allegation that the Attorney General's Office suggested lawsuits against complaints. Evidently, you were never provided with a copy of my letter to the Louisiana Press-Journal dated December 14, 2012. So, I enclose a copy. In the first paragraph, I clearly point out that, quote, "First, the Missouri Attorney General's Office has not now nor ever, quote, 'suggested,' end quote, or otherwise advised the city to take legal action against any person making the sunshine law complaint, even if the complaint was knowingly made on the basis of false information and with malicious intent. I never meant to state or imply that the city had received such advice," end quote. I believe my letter was published in the Press-Journal and that letter clearly outlines that city policy is set by the elected officials. City policy is to take no legal action against complainants, even in cases where the complaint is based on false information and known by the complainant at the time of making the complaint. And I think it's important here to add that the only hypothetical complaints discussed at this December meeting were if complaints were based on false information and known by the complainant to be false. Of course, the sunshine law provides immunity to those making complaints of good faith. On the other hand, the sunshine law affords no protection from civil liability for complainants, complaints that are knowingly made in bad faith. See revised statutes of the draft, 610.1283. To my knowledge, no complaint to your office has been found regarding the December council meeting, but I am interested in knowing if your office is claiming that sunshine immunity is absolute. I do not believe that is the law. Second, allegation that city policy is to encourage complainants to not make complaints with the Attorney General and make such complaints only to the city. Of course, a process is not effective if, as you write, quote, "an individual is required to file his complaint only with the very body alleged to have committed the violation," end quote. That is not what I ever suggested. As you can see from my letter to the Press-Journal, I stated that, quote, "If anyone questions whether or not city officials and employees adhere to the open meetings and records law, they are free to take action of their choosing, but I want to underscore that anyone may also bring these matters directly to the city's attention. Often, this could clear up any misunderstandings," end quote. Since no complaint about the December meeting was submitted to your office according to the exhibits provided to my office, I can only assume this allegation came from some other source that is clearly unreliable. This allegation underscores the way misunderstandings and misinformation has run rampant and why I agree with citizens bringing questions directly to my office as well as to any other office. Complaint number two. Meetings without adequate notice. Thank you for closing your file on this matter. I think that Ms. Smith's complaint that the city failed to give 24-hour notice in the city's effort to accommodate the employees' request to exchange their Veterans Day holiday for a Christmas Eve holiday had to do with Ms. Smith's mistaken belief that the, quote, "notice," end quote, requirement can only be shortened under exigent or emergency circumstances. I do not think the council intends to take action on short notice under similar circumstances unless no other viable option remains. Again, had Ms. Smith also referred her question to my office, we could have quoted her the applicable law to show her that the council acted properly. Complaint number one, September 10, 2012, closed meeting. The city does not intend to argue or challenge your conclusion that as soon as it, quote, "became apparent in closed session" that the discussion was focused on Ms. Morris's conduct, the council was obliged to adjourn the closed session, end quote. While some may question whether a judge would agree with your approach to totally ignoring the sworn testimony of five members, five council members and the mayor that the original intent was to discuss Mr. Jenny, I advise the city to agree to the proposal of additional training. The point I merely wish to underscore is that regardless of your conclusion that the meeting should have been adjourned earlier, I see nothing in your letter to suggest that the council did not, in fact, legally convene a closed meeting. If you intended to make a conclusion that a closed meeting was never conducted, I would appreciate your explicit opinion to that effect. This point is important. There's a subtle distinction between a meeting intended to be closed, which never was legally closed, versus a meeting intended to be closed and was in fact closed, but should have been adjourned. Your letter has been inappropriate, inappropriately argued to constitute, in effect, a judicial ruling that somehow vindicates the improper recording of a closed meeting that led to Ms. Morris's impeachment. The impeachment discussion was never, the impeachment decision was never appealed to the Court of Appeals and thus the court, the council's findings of fact and decision is a final order. Conclusion. The city agrees that its council and city attorney will gladly take advantage of the opportunity to receive additional sunshine law training. Two. The city agrees to provide your office with copies of city council notices and minutes for a six-month period. Three. I request, however, that you reconsider your request in item number three and withdraw the same, particularly that portion requested of the city to stipulate that, quote, "under the present circumstances, any such suit would border unfreehold," end quote. Let me elaborate my reasons for this request to reconsider. I think the letter of the city attorney to the citizens, a copy of which I enclosed, shows that the city is not claiming your office recommended suit against any city. Secondly, the city has already sort of clarified that anyone wishing to seek assistance of the Attorney General is free to do so. But they are also free to make an inquiry or complaint directly to the city's attorney's office too. There's nothing false about that. I also want you to reconsider your request to, that the city stipulate the language that, quote, "under the present circumstances, any such suit by the city would border unfreehold," end quote. The phrase, quote, "under present circumstances," end quote, is so vague that this could not constitute any sort of admission of what might happen in a future hypothetical situation. Second. Clearly, the statutory immunity to persons making sunshine law is qualified and applies only to complaints made in good faith. Thus, a complaint made in bad faith enjoys no such immunity and a suit arising from a bad faith complaint would not necessarily be frivolous. Is there anything improper about people understanding the meaning of statutory language? Third. No qualified immunity would protect an individual from legal action taken by a government employee in their individual capacity suing for libel or slander. Was your ever intended to cover that type of situation? I would have a difficult time imagining any judge ever ordering a city to agree to make an admission of the likes of which you propose. Lastly, I would like clarification on whether your request for a consent, quote, "judgment," end quote, is seeking a judgment entered by the Circuit Court of Pike County or a stipulation with the Office of the Missouri Attorney General. I will say, we have a number of citizens who believe that any opinion in the Attorney General's Office has the same force and effect as a judgment of a court of record. However, my reading of Missouri law indicates otherwise. For example, in laws versus Secretary of State reported at 895 Southwest 2nd, Missouri Appeal Appellate Court, Western District, 1995, the Court of Appeals noted that, quote, "Attorney general opinions are not entitled to any more deference than that of any other competent attorney." And that they were citing the Missouri Supreme Court holding in Gershman Investment Corporation versus Danforth, 517 Southwest 2nd, 33, at page 36. And that was a unanimous decision, a decision of the Missouri Supreme Court in Bank, 1974, holding that courts, not the Attorney General, have power to construe and declare the law. If my reading of the law is incorrect, I would certainly be open to any further education your office can provide. Also, this letter is written to resolve disputed matters to avoid potential litigation for no other purpose, pursuant to law. The citizens' communication to be settled in negotiations is therefore inadmissible in any proceeding. Therefore, nothing here should be considered an admission of any legal liability on the part of any person until a final agreement is reached between all parties and ratified by the governing body. Summary. Therefore, the city is willing to gratefully accept and agrees to attend additional training. Details to follow. The city is further agreeable to providing copies of meeting notices and minutes for a six-month period as requested. The city requests, on the other hand, that your office withdraw your request in paragraphs 3A and 3B inasmuch as clarification of these points were already published in the local newspaper and signed by the city attorney. Yours, Ray Trulli. Robert Brat, the city attorney. So, that is, is the proposed letter. If that meets with your approval, I'll be happy to sign that and send that out.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hopman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Mr. Mayor, I have signed the letter. I'm going to give it in the attachment to the city clerk and ask her to send that out to Morris Mail and provide all members of council and the mayor with a copy of the letter.
All right. We had another, before we go on. Okay, before we go on, Chuck made a request. We have a deal on the old state. What's the council's pleasure?
I have a question. I've, I've read the report from the Attorney General and I've read the newspaper articles that I have yet to really find in there a sentence that says Ms. Morris has been vindicated.
It does not say that in fact.
Mr. Hopman implied that she has been.
I, this comes from a group of people. It does not necessarily come from me.
So, you're just the message carrier?
I'm the message carrier. I was voted as their representative. It's my job to bring things like this before the council.
Well, I'll read again from the Attorney General's letter. This is the last paragraph in their section on complaint number one. It said, "Even assuming there was discussion by the council of Mr. Jenny's conduct, section 610.022.3, RSMO, requires that a closed meeting must be, quote, 'closed only to the extent necessary for the specific reason announced to justify the closure,' end quote. When it became apparent in closed session, closed session, that the discussion was focused on Ms. Morris's conduct and not the hiring, firing, discipline, or promotion of Mr. Jenny, the council was obligated to adjourn the closed session and discuss the issue regarding Ms. Morris in an open session." So, throughout their letter, they, the Attorney General's Office refers to it as a closed session. And a point of law, there was a time period, 30 days to file a notice of appeal to the Missouri Court of Appeals. The statute set out the procedure. The Constitution sets out the procedure for impeachment of a state officer. The statute sets out impeachment. The council followed that statute. Any person agreed by that ruling had 30 days to file a notice of appeal. No notice of appeal was filed. The time to appeal that decision is final. Since the statute gave the council the sole and exclusive prerogative of removing one of its own members for cause, that's a final legal decision that can't be challenged now in any court.
David?
Yeah. My name's Dave Minor. I got some questions. You know, you got all this bickering and hatred. I'm wondering, what about if we took all this and use it more, put everything aside and everybody just join together and worry about the future of Louisiana, Missouri? And I'm going to tell you why. I don't know if anybody here has noticed or not lately that it's not looking, we're looking kind of bleak around here. And if we keep going in the direction we're going, we're going to be like Ashburn or Atlas or Clarksville, you know? And Louisiana, Missouri's got more potential than that. And I'd also like to take this time to thank Carl and Kathy Sibley for stepping in and opening this door. You know, Louisiana, Missouri is a beautiful town. It's a river town. And I'm, you know, we've got some good people around here. But we're going to have to decide whether we want a future or do we want a ghost town? And, you know, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, David. Anybody else like to address the council? Now we're going on. We need hearing petitions or other communications? Committee reports, finance.
The finance committee met at 5:30 this afternoon. The minutes are before you.
Did I?
Yes.
You got the, the 123rd paragraph, it's kind of, I got it on the table. Are you paying DNR 842,000?
Wait a minute, the third, from the bottom or from the top?
That is a request that goes to DNR to, to pay. Why are the money back to us for the bond issue to pay to?
Lehman. And. We got Lehman in the, in the paragraph above it, but you left him out of that. Does that hold, like, 842,000 going to DNR or is it?
The request is going to DNR to pay.
It's a request to pay.
Yeah.
A request to pay Lehman.
Clean.
Cleaner and Lehman.
Are there any other questions on the minutes from earlier today? I make a motion, will you approve them, Mrs. Second?
I second it.
Thank you.
Motion made, second. Call the roll. Paying all the bills. Should we go through?
We don't approve them.
Okay. Okay. I made a motion to bring before the full council warrant number four through warrant number 12, 2013, in the amount of $226,466.70. This amount also includes $5,250 paid to Clanger and Associates, $500 paid to Highway 54 Coalition, and the Sullivan Junior Firefighters, $150. These were requested and they were included in the warrant. I make a motion that we approve the warrants number four through number 12. Is there a second?
Motion made, second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott? Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hopmans? Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White? Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we sent out bids for, uh, the heating and cooling system at City Hall. We received one bid back. It was from Tech Heating and Cooling from Quincy, Illinois, and they submitted a bid for a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-and-eighty-one dollars for both the heating and cooling systems. Let me say that we had budgeted, budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for this, and the remainder of five-hundred, I mean, five-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-eighty-one dollars would have to come from reserves.
Fifty-five thousand.
I'm, I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand, what did I say?
Just for clarification purposes, originally the submittal was just to address the air conditioning issue, but as they got into it and looked into it more, it was obvious that the heating system, uh, had some difficulties, so it was easier to change the system from an all-electric system. This time we'll bring in, um, gas, natural gas, and it'll be on, on a heating side, and it'll be more economical. We'll bring in two of boilers. So that was the change.
Okay.
I make a motion that we pay the, the bid, or we accept the bid. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mr., Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Okay, as I said earlier, we had paid in this, uh, month's billing, five-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to Clanger and Associates for, um, cryptosporum. There is another bill that we have from Clanger and Associates for five thousand dollars for the water plant for cryptosporum. I make a motion that we pay this bill. Is there a second?
I'll second. Motion made, second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Okay. We have a bill for Missouri DNR for the wastewater plant project for Clanger and Associates in the amount of twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, and Lehman Construction in the amount of eight-thousand-twenty, or eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars for a total amount of eight-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents. We spoke about this earlier. The entire amount goes to DNR, but it's divided in amounts to Clanger and Associates and Lehman Construction. I make a motion that we approve this bill.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
Can you tell me how much money, uh, Lehman's been paid so far?
Not offhand. I can find out and let you know.
Okay.
For this year or since when?
Since it started.
Since it started, okay?
I had it, but I took it upstairs.
Pardon?
I had it, but I took it upstairs.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Laura.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. Motion made, second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
That is all I have for the finance commission, uh, committee. I make a motion, will you approve?
Thank you. Fire committee, Mr. Hoffman.
The fire committee met, and the minutes were approved. Mike Whitaker has been dropped to substitute. James Rubio has been brought to full-time. Baby, uh, Yabara has been hired as a substitute pending background and, uh, treaty. Sullivan, Missouri, in the near future. Oh, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. The junior firefighters program was, has been paying numerous sets of boots for a small fee from the Union Fire Protection District. Three of the junior firefighters are going to attend training in Sullivan, Missouri, in the near future. And that's all I have, because someone else has.
And they will pay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Police committee.
Okay, we approved the minutes of our January committee meeting. It was stated that, uh, Jeff Windmiller had resigned from the Louisiana Police Force to seek other employment. Also stated that Sergeant Salloy was gone for military duty, and he's still being on probation, uh, his probationary period will extend the amount of time he's gone for military duties for that. So, um, we are operating with an officer short. Chief Hughes has been doing some patrol work, so in the last round of interviews and all we did for police officers, Gina Calvin was one of those in the process and would be next in line, so I would like to make a motion that, to, for full counsel to approve the hiring of Gina Calvin as a full-time police officer. She's already had all the preliminary...
I'll second. Motion made, second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Also, in the same note, what's, puts us short again, Officer Blaylock has been offered a job with the Sheriff's Department and has accepted that position. So effective the first of March, uh, he will leave full-time police duty and go to reserve to help us out in the interim. So we will be, uh, doing interviews and looking for another full-time officer coming up right away. Another item that I spoke with Jim Wood, who's street and allies chairman, briefly a few minutes ago, we've had numerous complaints about parking on Georgia Street. So in that light, I think we have two options that we could go for this. One being that we take this to a work study, try to figure out the boundaries, the timelines, any exceptions that we might want to have on this, and then bring it back to council. The simplest option, we could do it right now and grant Chief Hughes the, uh, latitude to post the signs where he thinks they need to be, and with the timeframe, say eight to five o'clock or whatever timeframe, that there be two-hour parking limit on Georgia Street between whatever blocks is the most concerned about. Well, my suggestion is that we would take a vote and give Chief Hughes the authorization to do this. He's the best one to know about traffic problems, and that's, that would be my suggestion. And if there's no objections from the council, I make a motion that we allow Chief Hughes the, or give Chief Hughes the authority to secure, secure the signs and post them as needed where they're needed.
Now, could I clarify one thing?
Sure.
Yeah. I have had any trouble with people that park in front of their own buildings. It's people parking in front of other businesses that keeps business from coming into their business. That's where the problem is. So if somebody wants to park in their store, they stay there ten days, do you want to...
Let me second that so we can have discussion. I second. Chief Hughes, that Rob is helping, that people, that Jim's helping out. They have to speak up.
Well, and, you know, there could be, uh, extenuating circumstances, exceptions, um, some of the buildings that have tenants above them, um, they shouldn't have the right to park there at least overnight while they're in their residence. Uh, so, you know, I think Chief Hughes would be the best one to set the parameters to put out the signs and parking from wind to wind.
Isn't there an ordinance on how long you could park on Georgia Street?
Well, we thought there was, but, and a couple of people researching this, we did not find it.
Because I've always been taught, it's, you can't park there overnight.
Uh, uh, the answer to that used to be when we had the parking meters, the merchants requested they be removed. But then they got to where they was parking on Georgia Street all the time, so merchants were upset because nobody'd come to their stores. So then they put up the signs of two-hour parking, but we didn't have a meter made or a, a officer that checked the time element, so you couldn't really enforce it. Chief Hughes?
I was just gonna reiterate on that. We do not do the appendix for the parking on a limited times. There's nothing in there for two-hour parking right now. So there is nothing that gives us any strength on that, and I believe we see our remnants from one of the days of, uh, the meters being posted out there. Any other discussion?
If not, we got a motion on the floor, a second. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hamper?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
That's all we have time for.
Okay. Streets and out.
Um, just what they motioned to amend in January meeting, the twenty-second motion, all voting yea, motion carried, and we had no new business. And I also don't have any this month, but if somebody would like, had any problems, they'd like talk to us and do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry? You don't have anything? Oh. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Billings and grounds.
Mr. White made a motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting. Mr. Hoffman, the second motion, all voting yea, motion carried. Curtis Henderson from the school made a presentation, uh, to renovate Wallace Park. He stated the softball field is not regulation size and would like to formulate a plan to make numerous changes. He stated he has volunteers to help with resurfacing, demolishing, and rebuilding. The school would help absorb part, we estimate, of thirty-four thousand dollars it would take to do the renovation. Mr. Elliott stated that if the project is to be done, he wants the renovations at Lincoln Park to be done first. Mrs. Robin Morris inquired about the work that needs to be done at Lincoln Park and what the status is at this time. Okay. Mr. White explained that the flagpole will be put in after locates are done, and that we're sure we can dig in the spot that's allotted for it. Mr. Jenny said, "We're waiting for more appropriate weather to fix the pole." Money was donated from the Rotary for new playground equipment, and the city was to match that amount. Mr. Hoffman inquired about adding to the Sunset Park sign that the park was established in nineteen twenty-seven. This has already been done. There was only one bid submitted for the new HVAC system for City Hall. Tech Heating and Cooling from Quincy, Illinois submitted a bid for one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-eighty-one dollars for both heating and cooling. Uh, Mrs. Rat, Mrs. Pat Radford approached Mr. Jenny concerning the murials that were to possibly be donated to the city. There was discussion, and it was stated since there is a graduation here on them, it would make it conflict. I'd like to go back on this and we'll get, I met with Mr. Hendricks from the school, and we're working on getting something done. Thirty-four thousand dollars is out of question. Okay, the murials, uh, we met with Stark Brothers, and they're considering letting us use the murials out there next to the trailer by the old log cabin. They haven't got back, we can know or must have yet on that. And I understand that the floor was probably re-refinished today.
No.
You didn't pour the concrete?
Nope, it'll be poured tomorrow.
Okay, well...
Is this the concrete, uh, like it's though?
Yeah, it's all been cut, graded, compacted, and I thought it was gonna be poured today. The locates were finished on the flagpole, and that's gonna be next. That's all I have.
Larry, didn't you change fields on the proposal from the high school, from the small tee-ball field to a different field for renovation purposes?
Yeah, I, I can explain that. They can't use the big field because it has a mound, and in the softball, you can't have the mound. The little field out there that he wants to use, we would have to dig up ground and re-sod everything. And that's the ground that's used the most by the little, smaller teams, tee-ball and everything else. The other field that makes the most sense is the fireman field and help field. And, uh, I think after looking at it and talking about it and trying for a donation, we could move the bases instead of moving the backstop and moving the water line at the back of the, the stop. We can add to that stop, move, uh, hole played up ten feet, first place, first base ten feet, second base same out, and third base over ten feet, and they could use that field. And in talking with, uh, with the quarry league out there, Mike Williams, they're kind of hurting on money, and they can't afford to kick in on any of this. They're gonna need a new four-wheeler, and that's what they use to cut the field, drag the fields and all that. We're, we're working on something to get some money without that high of a cost. And Mr. Henderson seems to think that it might work, but he's gonna have to contact the softball league and see if that will work for them. Our field out there is two-hundred-and-eighty-foot deep. When we move the bases, that's gonna cut it to two-seventy. The maximum they could have is a hundred-and-seventy-eight. So we're gonna have to have another fence put out there. And I can go on and on about it. The fence, they could put up a temporary fence, or we could put up a regular commercial fence, and after their tournament, we could cut that fence in half and use that fence on the big field, which was put up a hundred-foot of residential on both sides, first base and third base side. We could either leave it or that, which I know the fence is gonna have to be replaced, and it's possible they could use that fence on the big field. But that's, everything that works on that, it's just everybody has it on that yet.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Um, do you have any idea how much the new plan will cost? It will be less than thirty-four thousand?
Oh, yeah.
But do you have an approximate?
I'm guessing a little less than ten thousand.
And the high school would still be interested in going fifty-fifty?
That's what we have to see.
Okay.
We've got somebody that, Mike and Laura, I'd say we could cut ours to maybe three thousand dollars, but I don't wanna be held to that.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, because they understand we're low on money. Yeah, because they understand we're low on money also.
Uh, have the bids gone out for the sale of the hard-juiced building?
No.
No. Okay.
That's all I have. Okay. Board of committee?
Hi, Larry. Uh, we approved the amendments in the January, not December meeting. And there was an accident at Wake Forest, uh, one of the construction works. Yeah, I talked to the people down there today. He had a couple of pins put in his spine. Uh, he's healing well, and they look for him to be back in the next four or five weeks. How's it going? How's it going?
He's on schedule. What I was told, there was no surgery, and he was home.
We need, uh, I would like to, we've got on our west end water.
I'll be applying for, uh, request qualifications for an engineering grant. And once we get that established, and it is due March fifteenth, uh, once we hear back on that, then I can put it out for bid. And we will go from there. I've got preliminary estimates on costs and floating alone.
Did you say the loan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the E Street, uh, water tank is leaking. What are we going to do?
I'm still, since it's a minimal leak, I'm waiting on a guy that's coming in to, um, do the finish coat on the exterior wall at, uh, Robbins Nest, and who said he would take a look at that, um, when they came in to do that. Because he believes that they can do it from the outside as opposed to the, to the inside.
How- how much belief is that? Is, can you see it running or is it just seeping?
It's just seeping. You know, you're talking a couple gallons of water.
Uh, is that something? That's all I have.
Okay. Grant committee?
We approved the amendments of the January meeting. We just discussed the paving grant for the industrial park. The city has done their part of this, um, everything that we're required to do. It's up to press journal printing to complete their part at this time. Mr. Adams stated that he had received all of the contracts for the demolition grant and is getting them signed by the property owners. After they're all signed, the mayor and contractors have to sign them as well. And the contractors at that point will have ten days to begin work, and they have seventy days to complete that. Mr. Jenny stated he should know by the end of the month about the grant for the recycled benches down at the riverfront. Uh, Mr. Jenny already mentioned about the grant through DNR for the engineering service, services for the new industrial tower, industrial park water tower. And it's also about time to submit an application for the trend grant. And a representative from Mark Twain Regional was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting today, and she informed them that she believed the city may be eligible for the Saint to School grant. Uh, Mr. Jenny will get in touch with the school, as it would most likely be more feasible for them to get the grant. Have you talked with Dr. Bastin or?
No, I have not, because basically that is their property. It is not our property. We cannot apply for a grant on their behalf. It has to be initiated by them. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance committee?
First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Hoffman to the ordinance committee. Um, I made a motion to approve the mess in the January meeting. Mr. Elliott seconded the motion and carried. Mr. Elliott made a motion to bring an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero to full council for approval. Mr. White seconded the motion, all voting yea, motion carried. This ordinance brings the city into compliance with state statutes and is in reference to holding more than one position by the city. Mrs. Robin Morrison inquired which statute number the city is in conflict with to require this ordinance. Mr. Rapp will give a written answer. I'm not going to challenge Mr. Elliott's comments. If Mr. Rapp wants to make the comment, you may.
Uh, after I thought about this more, I looked back at the ordinance vote, our ordinance vote, one-one-five-point-one-seven-oh, duties of the city attorney, and they don't include red ring private legal opinions to individuals. The administration requests a legal opinion. I think that's new. If the council as a whole votes for an opinion, I think that's new. Other people connected with city government or individual councilmen who have legal questions, I may, but I don't believe I'm required to give an opinion in all those instances. And it does seem to be outside the duties of the city attorney to render legal opinions to private citizens. Thank you. So I- I'm declining to do that.
Okay, so we don't know whether it would be in violation of state law or am I correct?
Well, no, I didn't say that. I said, as to Ms. Morrison's request for opinion, I'm declining to give a a city attorney opinion to a private individual.
An ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Louisiana, County of Pike, Missouri, to amend City Code Section one-one-five-point-zero-three-zero, holding more than one position as follows the whip. These have been posted, so what is the council's plan?
I made a motion to accept the summons.
Are you accepting the first reading?
First reading, of course.
A second.
Motion made. Second, call the robe.
I'd like to have some discussion.
Okay.
I think tonight we had some questions about this. You read the Hatch Act. Am I correct? Yes, and the Hatch Act requires the election to be a partisan election. And this is not a partisan election. So my question is, does it in any way conflict with any statute that we might have here in Missouri? That's what I was asking.
Yeah. The Hatch Act, though, uh, I don't think it's controlled by Hatch Act.
No, it's not. No, it's not. And that's.
No, it's actually a constitutional violation. We wrote that up on there. And anybody in the state of Missouri can run for office, whether they're employed in the city or the state, no matter anything. And there's procedures under the Hatch Act for state employees, but there's no procedures for municipal employees.
Just kind of a passing note on the Hatch Act. It's often thrown around as an all-or-nothing deal. But one time I was in contact with the people in Washington who are responsible for enforcing the Hatch Act. And, uh, according to their information, uh, you know, generally people think the Hatch Act only implies if it's a partisan election. And most municipalities in Missouri are nonpartisan, but there's all sorts of exceptions to that.
Yeah, and on the twenty-seventh of January, it opened it all up.
One of those exceptions was that, uh, if somebody ran for a nonpartisan, but they declared party affiliation, Hatch Act applied.
But no longer does.
Hatch Act also would apply in cases where federal money is used, which, you know, is kind of a typical federal thing. You want our money, we get to, we get some control. But there has been a big limit to that. I don't think the Hatch Act is really.
No, I know it's not. That's, I'm not saying that. But I know is that there are numbers after our ordinance. Have they been checked? It never went to, the ordinance never went to.
Yeah, them- them ordinance is actually, the ordinance that they refer to is your part-time fireman and your police officer.
But there's no state statute there?
No. Okay. Any other discussion? We had a motion and a second. Call the robe.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Ms. Hanford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott made a motion to bring an ordinance to amend City Code Section one-one-five-point-two-zero-zero to full council for approval. Mr. White seconded the motion, all voting yea. This ordinance will change the city administrator's position from contracted to appointed by the mayor.
With approval by the council. Sorry. With approval by the council.
Yeah, that's law for any mayor.
With approval by the council. Correct. Thank you. An ordinance to amend City Code Section one-one-five-point-two-zero-zero. I'd like a motion that we accept this.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question about this. I know I have a lot of questions. Uh, I'm wondering if annually is the best way to be using? Because if you are contracting someone who is a, uh, a city employee like that, they need to have some sort of a feeling that maybe they can remain in the job more than one year. And my feeling is I'd like to see annually removed and deferred indefinitely.
Well, your state statute, seven-seven, says it would be annually.
Okay, that's what I guess.
Any other discussion? Motion made, second. Call the robe.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Ms. Hanford?
No.
Mr. Hoffman?
I, if it's legal, the state statute, I don't, yes.
Mr. Oakley?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Monsieur Oakley?
Yeah, I have another ordinance here that is, uh, an ordinance to change intersection. And this is for the second reading. An ordinance to amend Section six-oh-five-point-one-three-zero, the City of Louisiana, Missouri, to amend an ordinance stating intersections of transportation guidelines, Section eight. I'd like a motion to accept this ordinance. Second.
This motion made, a secondary discussion. If not, all robe.
Mr. Elliott?
Ms. Hanford? Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
No, I don't believe in that. Yeah, that's everything.
Mr. Oakley?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Motion passed.
I made a motion to bring an ordinance to amend capture two-old one animal in foul in Municipal Code of the City of Louisiana, County of Pike, Missouri, to full council for approval. Mr. Elliott seconded the motion, all voting yea. With approval for court treaty. An ordinance to amend capture two-ten animal in foul, being here ordained by the City Council of Louisiana, Missouri, Pike County, Missouri, to amend the city capture two-ten animals in foul, green, followed by a whip. I'd like a motion to accept this, as, as written and discussed and worked today, and could be.
I'll second that.
Discussion? If not, all robe.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Ms. Hanford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
No, I don't think it's ready yet.
Mr. Oakley?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes. Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. To report to a special committee, city administrator.
Uh, just one thing to note, uh, I will be heading up to the northeast correctional facility compliments of our animal control officer, Wiley Harrison. Uh, the correctional facility will be donating a significant amount of dog food to us at no cost whatsoever.
Beautiful.
I will drive up there and pick it up tomorrow, and thanks to Wiley, this will be ours. It's not a one-time deal, from what I understand, so, we should be set very well. Thank you, Wiley.
Thank you. Okay. Human relations?
Human.
Okay, thank you, Albert. Board of justices?
Uh, your board is well represented here tonight, but we don't have a thing for you.
We have no resolutions? Any new bids? Media clarification?
I want to clarify the vote on the city administrator ordinance.
We want to know what all the rest here.
Ms. Hanford being the only one. Thank you.
That's correct. Anything else or media?
I have several questions.
Yes.
Um, I- I don't know if I got, maybe I didn't get complete notes or something, because I- I didn't get some of those that were voted on tonight, like the city administrator ordinance. What number was that? I didn't get anything. One-one-five-point-two-hundred? Is there? I- I guess I thought this was voted on before, but it was a different thing?
No, it was the same thing already defeated before.
Okay, so I thought that it was changing the title from.
Different order, yeah, different order.
And so this isn't.
Different type.
This isn't changing it from an administrator to superintendent?
No, it's administrator. Day's the same.
Okay, but it's changing it from contracted to appointed?
Right.
Or yearly?
Annual.
Okay. So, uh, and that was to, I- I thought I heard states, something about state statute?
It says that he will be appointed, and it doesn't say annually, and the salary be set.
Okay. So this is changing the ordinance to be in, uh, compliance with state statute?
Give you a little history on, in, uh, I'm going to say, uh, two thousand and five, there was an ordinance drawn up that made an appointment for the city administrator. In two thousand and seven, it was changed to have an agreement. Contract. And we're taking it back to the original. By state statute. There's no, there's no place that statute said anything about contracts.
Uh, now, this ordinance, in effect, accomplishes the same thing that the, the, changing it from administrator to superintendent would have done.
Nothing else changed. Nothing.
Right, and I'm talking about when it was defeated, to change the title. And that would have, so this accomplishes the same thing?
No. No. It's, uh, you're, you're not changing the title. We didn't change, we didn't change any duties before.
I understand that. It was just a change in title, but it would have also made it an appointment to.
Yeah, would have made it appointment.
So it accomplishes that.
That's correct.
To bring it into state statute. And then this, um, like I said, I, I, I only come to the regular meetings, so I understand that I'm also behind. But this went through ordinance committee last month?
It was discussed last month.
Discuss in ordinance committee?
Yeah, it was read last month.
Okay. Yeah, we have sports. I had those last month. So then this is the second reading or first?
Second.
So the second and final?
The first read.
Oh, first.
This is the first read.
Okay.
It was done in committee?
It went to committee last week.
It was in committee last week.
So it wasn't in last month?
It was discussed last month. It went to committee last week. And this is the first reading.
Had a work study.
So there was a work study? Okay, uh, I, I, I think I have it straight. So then it, it's not filed until a second reading though? And that'll be next month? And there's not a discussion, like, a, a work study or anything scheduled in between that? Okay. I'm sorry. And then, and I wish that we're all. I also had a question about, sorry? Um, the one one five oh three oh, is there a copy of that that I? Um, I'm, I'm unclear what that accomplishes. And I, I don't know.
It just prohibited, it takes out the sentence, the first sentence. Took out, prohibited, uh, city employees from running for public office.
For running for public office. But there was never, oh, okay. I guess this is, cause I've heard talk about this from several different places. And I've done e- exactly zero research, but, um, if, uh, okay, I, my understanding when I talked to Sharon about it before was that a person could run for office, but not hold office if elected.
Yep.
When I called about Jim Meyer, that was what he would say to me, that they were able to run, but not hold. So does, so, but now we're saying running again. So I think, again, it's like a terminology.
You do get. It does restrict him from running.
He can run for office.
Okay. Now, this was a couple of months, like when, when he first signed up, I called him and asked, and you said that he could run, but not hold?
State statute said he couldn't run.
State, okay, but city ordinance said that he couldn't run or hold. So then, so now this will make it.
That's correct. Leave.
Okay, to where he can run, but not hold?
Can I explain some history on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
We'll turn to her.
Well, why don't you have a private meeting with her?
Yeah, say that, and that's, and that's fine, that's fine, I can.
Well, the thing was, Jim signed up and we discovered that this was a violation of, like a Hatch Act, the state constitution, and the law of parties. Because we can't restrict the citizen anytime, anyplace from running and holding office, no matter what his job is. So it was not too smooth the way, the way it was reported for a man running. It was to keep the city from being sued if he won, and the city made him say that it couldn't serve.
Yeah, for her sake, explain that to her after she wants to really take it down into.
Okay, that's, that's fine, but say, what it accomplishes is that anyone who is an employee of the city can both run and hold. Office.
Yes.
Half is, half is saying yes and half is saying no.
City attorney said yes.
If him else said no too.
I should have given the history of that ordinance. We had a cop that was also a volunteer farming. And he was on duty as a policeman when a fire call came in. He stopped protecting the city and wouldn't protect it.
There's no reason to pursue this.
And then just the, the, the water foul or animal infowl, is there a copy of, of that one off some?
This is, come, come.
Those ordinance should be supposed to be.
They're right there.
You're right, you're on.
Oh, wonderful. I had not seen this before. This is a new thing. Well, this is the new thing. We've not had this before. Yeah, I missed a month. I have sports. Um, and then I just was curious, just if I could meet with you about all of like the city stuff. Cause I have a lot of questions about like the water stuff and all of that, so I won't waste time with all those questions.
Not tonight, tomorrow's?
No, 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 I meant later this week, anyway. I was like, you're not gonna meet with me at all? Am I not terrible? All right. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. Motion made, second, adjourned. Call the roll.
Mr. Elliot?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanford?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Oh, my God. I miss my wife, huh? Take care.
So what's the ordinance going for, or was it?
The original ordinance was, believe it or not, what it is right now. No, not.
Okay, it's just a simple question of running the bullet. I wanna.
He developed, it falls down.
This does the most horrible picture.
You know what? I don't think people even care. You know, they're not looking at. You, you know what I'm saying? I think they're more lit than anything. Makes it a little better for everybody, because that way there's no.
But one time, my hair was dirty and when it gets dirty, it separates with the back.
I think it was mine. It was probably when I was sitting there.
Yeah. And every time I turn them on and I've got a towel like that here too, I'm so excited.
Very glad I'm over here. I saw myself a couple of times, like I'll be turning it, you know? And then I'll get my, the side of my face and like my double chin and everything, like. Oh, but I think I'm doing it mainly because of the city as well. You know, I mean, it's common thing. And it's cool because that way things that are said are not missing. All, all different sides. We at the council.
There has been so much. Said way too much.
Way, way too much. Yeah, lots of things passed around that are not true and people.
I know.
Things against people and trying to turn other people against other people. And also facts that are just not being understood. So I'm helping, you know, I'm trying to, like with me, things that are, things that are about other people. So I'm talking with some of those people, try to get some of that, not just for me. But they've labeled, you know, say me because I'm a friend's reporter, like, oh, she's a crony, shit, blah, 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 you know? I'm like, I don't even need to learn a reporter for, not even six, six months, eight months, whatever.
I'm from here.
Yeah, I, I, I went, I was, I graduated from Clopton. Okay, I, my parents divorced in ninety one, eighth, when I left eighth grade, went to Clopton. My dad's from Flotsville, my mom is from here. And, um, we lived out of country when I was still in college. And so they divorced, I went to Clopton, then I left and went down to Troy, down towards the city. And then came back, had my dick sucked up home. Nice, that's good. But, so I'm now, I'm back up here again and, I'm like, you know, my grandparents, uh, touring. No, I'm sorry. They used to have this junk store, I call it the junk store down by, uh, Parkland, Parkland, where they started it. They had that, like, I don't know exactly what date, but it was, it was about ninety.
See, I moved here in two, two thousand and three.
Okay.
So I've lived here pretty long and I'm not. Well, I was born in a town called Blackwater, New Orleans.
Yeah, I don't know where it's at, sure, but I heard it. Is it down south?
No, it's in the middle part of the city. And I moved down from there for six years. And before the other day, it was six, I was down. So that made me thirty. Well, I love both jobs. And I moved twenty three times.
I understand that.
And my, I'm a widow. And my, when my husband died, I had to stay in large rooms with, um, uh, that I could do commercial, I did hospitals for victims, uh, yeah. And so, whatever, I came from there. I had really no food. And I had all this stuff of collectio all along. And I rented a house in my house. So I got a big house and we went to work. And I, I loved working that house. And I liked it. And that, and the house turned around. And, uh, so it's been fun to do it. I still have a lot to do.
I would like to do that one day, right now, if that would happen.
Well, yeah, yeah, you know.
That's a little ways off, hopefully, yeah.
But it's fun to do. Anyway, and I, every time, my daughter lives in Bowling Green. So every time I would come up, she would say. Uh, Allison Givens, Ernie Givens, he was a student at school. They have since moved.
You had separated Bowling Green and Louisiana? Have you noticed that? I mean, it's been like that since I can remember. I'm thirty five, but it's been like that for a while now. And still to this day. It's like a particular thing. People are like, uh-uh, we don't wanna go to Bowling Green. And so I don't know if that's ever gonna change. Hopefully it will, but. Don't know. Oh, good night, Mr. Ray.
Yeah.
I would, I, I try to call you by Mister first.
But, uh, you know, they lived there and it was, it was fun being close to them, the grandchildren. But then my daughter. Had her jobs moved.
That's why I was not saying, I actually really liked St. Louis.
But the whole thing was.
I was in South City.
You want that.
A lot of people were like, oh my gosh, that's terrible down there. And it's like a small town, really, because I worked down there and I kept in that, you, but in that same area, you know, saying, five square mileage type area. People stay in the same place, that's for the most part. And strangers that come in are just like, up here, you know, it just happens there's more people down there, you know, I was being serious. And, but St. Louis is actually really small. You know, I couldn't believe how many people that I run into back and forth, back and forth. I like the city. But this is home, so, yeah.
I live in all accurately reporting what's going on here. People don't get mad just because they don't mind a mirror being held up. And he was very good in finance. So they would send us to any hospital that was having financial troubles.
Oh, okay.
And it would take him about three years to get back and keep it alive.
I worked at a city one cell for, I remember years down. Yes, I do.
And can I go home now?
No, you can't. It's too. Are these all?
I gotta wait, wait around, see if it's gonna snow, right?
Yeah.
Are these all the different ones?
I gotta go.
Oh, it's nice talking to you.
Thank you, nice talking to you.
We'll see you later. Hey, Porter, um.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, let me see.